Good evening, everyone. The time is now 5:28 and we are broadcasting on all platforms. Alderman Hanauer, can I have you do a quick mic test? We're gonna need to turn that one on, sir. That handheld. Turn the button on the side for me. It slides up to the top. It'll take about three seconds. It'll turn green.
Sounds good. Can you hear me?
That sounds great. Thank you, sir.
No more Mr. Roboto for you tonight.
Where'd you go?
You're acting like mork for mork. But you said nano nano. That's mork. Mork for mork. He was from outer space. Why are you shaking your head?
Good old North End stuff, yeah. I did have an old Camaro. Till I saw the mufflers off trying to put big mufflers on there, I ruined it.
Being that it's 5:30, the March 4th, 2025 meeting of the City Council is called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Redpath, can you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Alderman Cox.
Present.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Rockford.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase. Alderwoman Nutriano.
Here.
Alderman Carlson.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Buscher.
Present.
Mayor Buscher, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Clerk, the civility pledge, in the interest of civility, I pledge to promote civility by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community, and understanding that we each may have different ideas for achieving that objective. This evening, there are no proclamations or presentations to come before the council, so the Chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the February 18th, 2025 regular City Council meeting and approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances into the record of this council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this council meeting.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the final passage of the consent agenda? Seeing none, the voting will now be open. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion, oh, and let the record show that Alderwoman Purchase has joined us. Welcome, Alderwoman. And the motion passes with 10 voting yes, none voting no. You surprised me when I saw that. There are no items remained tabled or in committee at this time. The Chair will now entertain a motion to put on an omnibus vote, agenda items 2025-089, 2025-090, 2025-091, and 2025-092.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I will read each of those under the record quickly. 2025-089 is an ordinance approving the appointment of Daniel T. Chung to the Springfield Community Relations Commission. 2025-090 is an ordinance approving the appointment of Kenneth M. Yogres to the Civil Service Commission. 2025-091 is an ordinance approving the appointment of C.J. Metcalf as the General Public Representative to the Springfield Convention and Visitors Advisory Board, and 2025-092 is an ordinance approving the appointment of Joanna Judge as Deputy City Clerk. So we have a motion and a second for an omnibus vote. Before we put this towards final passage for a vote, can I get a motion from every, all those in favor of the omnibus vote, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. So now we will look at putting all these agenda items, 2025-089, 2025-090, 2025-091, and 2025-092 on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and before we get to discussion with the council, I do see that two of the people are here tonight. Do either of you want to speak? Do you want to say anything, Mr. Chung? No? Okay. And Ms. Judge, do you want to say anything? Okay.
Hello?
That's your first test.
All right. First, I want to thank Misty, Mayor, City Council, and Clerk Redpath for this opportunity. The last few months have been a little bit challenging, but as soon as Clerk Redpath was sworn in, he came in, established a chain of command and what his expectations were for us, and listened to our concerns, and we've just been clerking ever since. So I've been with the city for 10 years, in the clerk's office for about four, so I'm really thankful for this opportunity. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Does any of the council members have any discussion for Joanne? I know you're very familiar with her, all of you, so.
Congratulations, Joanne.
Well, we're gonna take a vote.
Well deserved.
Yeah. Okay, any discussion from the council members then? Seeing none, the voting will now be open. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with 10 voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda is item number 2025-115, an ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Springfield, Village of Sherman, and the Springfield Park District to revitalize Old Route 66 in preparation for the 100th year anniversary, and this is for emergency passage. Any discussion, I'm sorry, can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
And a second, any discussion from the council on this item? I know Chief of Staff Disco called each of you to talk to you about emergency passage items individually, but does anyone have any questions? I see Director Dahl here, so. No? Okay. The voting will now be open. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with 11 voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda is 2025-116, an ordinance accepting and authorizing the execution of a grant between the City of Springfield and the State of Illinois Office of the State Fire Marshal in an amount not to exceed $23,801.62 for small equipment items for the Springfield Fire Department for emergency passage. Can I get a motion? We have a motion, we have a second?
Sure. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? I know Chief Candy is also here. If any of you have any questions for him. Seeing none, the voting will now be open. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with 11 voting yes, none voting no. This time, that concludes our agenda items. Is there any unfinished business to bring before the City Council from the members? Alderwoman Purchase.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you to you. Thank you to Alderwoman Nutriano, and thank you to Director Amy for coming out to our first Taste of Black Springfield. It was exciting. It was a overwhelmed amount of support. We didn't have no parking, like you said, and it was about, I think our clicker, about close to 500 people came through the door. So it was, it felt like a big family reunion, and I just wanted to thank the whole city for coming out, and thank Roy and Sean too, for us working together to put this on, and we look forward to next year, and we're gonna invite you all out again, our colleagues.
And Director Harrison was there too.
Oh, I'm sorry, Director Quinn. I see your hand.
Mr. Pritchard.
Yep, and Planner Pritchard was there, yes.
So let me not get in trouble. Thank everyone from the city that came out to support us, because it was a very good event and a nice turnout, and we're looking forward to doing more of these type of events.
Very successful.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Mayor. And just real quick, if our legal counsel could give an update on the Ballyvon Apartments on Washington Street. As everyone knows, these have been, I'm gonna go with hot mess is my polite words for the day today, in a situation that the neighborhood and the schools have been dealing with for a number of years, most recently around this asbestos violation. So I understand we have some progress on this case.
Right. So just to refresh the City Council, we had been pursuing administrative court cases when there was asbestos remediation being done in violation of state law. So then the state moved in to take over the case, and we weren't allowed to go on the premises anymore until the asbestos was abated. The owner has entered into a contract for asbestos abatement with M&amp;O Environmental Company, so there will be, there will be individuals moving in and out as the asbestos is abated. This is still being overseen by the state, not the city, but once that's done, we can then go back to our inspection process and continue work through our administrative court. I have been meeting with the attorney for the owner to talk about the current status of our cases and how they want to move forward, because they still are intent on moving forward with rehabilitating the property. So we are in those discussions, but our enforcement action is still, is still paused until this asbestos is completed.
Paused but not ended.
Correct.
Right. So, because I do get, I get a lot of questions, and I know people drive by those apartments and, I mean, it really looks terrible. The apartment building, or the home next to it that used to be the daycare, also falling apart, not looking great. But because all of that is part of the one parcel, and we, that is one vote that we took on this council was to allow them to combine the daycare with their property and the apartment so they could, they could have a little more parking space for those units. The neighbors have been very concerned when they found out there was an asbestos release, and I will reiterate again, despite, again, a lot of effort on our part, we have not gotten great information to be able to share back with the residents about how much was released, what the plans are for remediation, and I certainly hope that we can try to get some more of that information so we can get those, that factual information to the residents who are living right next door to where the asbestos was released. I'm not even quite sure what it came from. If it was, there's not a lot left in that build, those buildings, so. But anyway, thank you, thank you for the update. It has really been a concern and an issue and a drain, and one that I want to make sure that we, as a city, see through to a full mitigation, not just the asbestos case, but everything else with those buildings. They're, they have potential to be a really great asset, and we know we need housing, and I certainly would like to see affordable housing developed in that part of my ward, but I also want to see it done safely, and I want to see it done in a way that respects the neighbors that have been living with, with a huge mess, right in their front side and backyards. So, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, along with that, Mr. Murdock, the, the, the house has got some trees out front that, that,
Thank you, yeah.
they're crumbling, and I mean, they could be gone tonight with the, or tomorrow with the winds, but my concern is, with the kids walking over from West Campus, is there, now that they've gotten the approval for, to start doing work, is that something they can, we can get them to cut those trees down? Because they're, I think they're old ash trees is what they are, and there's some big limbs that have fallen, and, and I'm surprised that they haven't fallen on Washington, you know, so.
Yeah, now that there's work actually being done, and there's a dialogue between the owner and the state, we can, we can work to see if, if that can, if taking those down can be accelerated through, through the state's oversight.
Yeah, I think that's, that's gotta be done quickly, because.
That's an immediate hazard.
Yeah, that's an immediate hazard that, that you've got kids walking to and from all the schools over there, and they use that sidewalk, and boy, all it would take is for one of those branches to fall, and that would, that could be very bad. So thank you.
Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Murdock, how long is that abatement process estimated to take?
I don't have that for this council, but I can, I can get that information and circulate it.
I think that would be good, just good info, you know, for, for the Alderwoman. You know, I bring that up because I've recently, I've been tagged in some posts about trash and bad houses, and I can tell you I am probably fed up with this fly dumping and trash stuff. It is getting out of control. So, you know, I think as a council, we gotta really, really put our heads together. I know, Murdock, you've been working with CWLP on, on the ordinance from 2016, on putting people on there. I think that if we catch people without trash, they need to go on CWLP or something to get this, get this thing going. Without even looking, I know we've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars picking up fly dumping, and it's just, it's just to a point where we gotta do something about it. We gotta look at it. I'm definitely open to all conversations, but it is over. Well, for our staff, for me, my colleagues, I'm sure, it's just to a point where we really gotta put our heads together. It's ridiculous, so.
Alderman, I'll follow up with you after this. I talked to one of the zone managers about that, that was working on that today, so I'll talk to you about a suggestion he had.
Sure. Thank you.
Mm-hmm, absolutely. Any other unfinished business? Seeing none, any new business to come before the council? We're gonna get everybody going, so you can go enjoy your Fat Tuesday and have some fattening food today, right?
You know it.
Right. What'd you say?
And drinks.
Oh, sorry. You're water. You're water. So the citizens who have signed up in advance to address the council, first person is Bob Emel. Is Mr. Emel here? Didn't see him. Okay. Ken Pasha, I also do not see Mr. Pasha.
He's in the hallway.
Oh, is he? Is Chief Candy, is he in the hallway? All right. What'd you say?
We trying.
You don't want to know what he's saying.
My apologies. I was out there talking to Chief Scarlett. I am actually gonna follow up on what we talked about regarding one of my friends and the officers that she dealt with. Everything's been taken care of in regards to that. She had a great follow-up visit, and the SPD did a pretty good job with it. The investigation's still ongoing, so shout out to them for actually making sure everything's okay. And I don't mean actually like they don't, but just in terms of, you know, how I approached it last time versus now, the outcome is a lot more appreciated, so I just want to keep an update on that. And then I do want to touch base with you guys in terms of, with the city itself in regards to funding. I don't know if you guys saw, the state of Illinois is awaiting $2 billion from the federal government. I'm not sure how much of a shortfall you guys may be looking at in that regard, but I do hope that we're doing our due diligence to get in touch with the community in regards to the needs that we do have and keeping those funded. I think there's gonna be a lot of things coming up in the next couple of years, probably a lot less time than that even, within the next couple of months, that are really gonna make this city have to confront a lot of issues that we may not have expected to confront, even as a city council, or as a city itself, or even citizens of this country. So I'm gonna kind of divert from my normal narrative of being a lot more locally focused and kind of talk to you guys more as just kind of, we're all adults here. I don't know how worried you guys are by what's going on. I don't know where you land on the political spectrum personally. We all have little letters behind our name, but that doesn't necessarily tell me who you are or what you believe about our current circumstances, but they're looking pretty dire, guys. I have a really hard time staying positive on a normal level, just because it's hard to not acknowledge the kind of world we live in on a general basis, but it's been a lot harder lately since January 20th. Even if you support some of the actions going on, you have to question the wisdom behind those choices. Social Security, Medicare, Medicaid, our national parks, I don't like to say D E I, because I think, I think that's a nasty word. I think moving forward with our civil rights and access for human rights is the kind of thing that I thought our country had long decided solidly, even if we disagreed about how we advanced on that. I thought everybody largely agreed, but we're gonna face shortfalls in a way I don't think any of us could have ever pictured. Our federal government seems to be largely abandoning us, and I think the deep, deep level of worry that some of the citizens have spoken about over the last six months, that may have sounded a little dire six months ago, sound a little more prescient now. So I hope that you guys, when you think about what we as a city are gonna do, really start considering the idea that we're gonna be doing that without a lot of available resources beyond what we have right now in front of us. It's very easy to start cutting things out of a budget when the money gets tight. That's the way it goes. But there's certain things we as a city need to hold on to, and I can't name all of them here in the next two minutes, but I think we all know the kind of things I'm talking about, from what I've covered over, even over the last six to seven months. I'll give Jeff a break, because he hasn't heard me talk much, but that's definitely something where with a lot of these issues, I've stayed consistent, but now these issues are gonna be a lot more locally focused, because I don't think we're gonna get the kind of help that we did. And I think it's deeply worrying for all of us, the kind of world that we're gonna be living in. It gives me a lot of pause as I go through my day, like when I try and give people hope, like when they reach out to me for advice or guidance, because I don't want to seem pessimistic about our options, but I do have to be realistic. You know, I'll say, I don't know. I don't know for once, guys. It really worries me, because we're watching things happen that leave us in a state where it seems like the world actually thinks we're losing touch. Not even just, you know, the President himself or our leaders, but like, our country is changing the way that it existed in the world and how it relates to its citizens, and our country itself, and I think it worries all of us in a way that I really hope you guys consider when you talk to your constituents, and they reach out to you, and they may even seem a little fervent about the tiniest things lately, but I think a lot of that is because we're trying to control what we can control right now, because a lot of this is way out of our hands. We look at what's happening on the news, and we can't do a whole lot about it, but here in this city, we can. You guys do have that power. You know that. And I think it's gonna be really important in the coming months, when I've encouraged you guys to think about the unhoused, the mentally ill, the kind of people that are the most vulnerable, human, victims of human trafficking. I mean, these are people that right now, our federal government is not going to concentrate the resources on or the energy on to do anything for. And while we haven't quite done that very much, we really need to start doing that, because these people are going to be even deeper marginalized, and so are our own citizens, like seniors, people that rely on Medicare and Medicaid, which we have a large number of those people in our city. I mean, my own mother came to me today, who relies on her social security retirement, and she's a reliever. Her lease expires in June. She may not have the money to renew that if they cut her social security, at which point she'll move in with me. And I think that's the thing, guys, is I really encourage you to take your time making plans, when you're considering ordinances, when you're thinking about what we're gonna do with this money, because people are gonna be coming.
Mr. Pasha, can you wrap up, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
With really deep concerns that are existential in a way that move beyond just local. So I encourage you to really, when these people reach out to you, to speak to that matter, because it's gonna be a lot more than just garbage not getting picked up, or, you know, just small things. So thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Kim.
The next person signed up to speak is Robert Fraser. Mr. Fraser.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Rainy day, we needed it. Really, really is helping some things. Let me go real quick. Got a lot to cover real quick. I feel like it's a, you know, rainy day. It's a purge, right? Same thing where all of us have gone through, or going through, similar to the day and times we live in right now. Not sure what's gonna happen. Been there, done that. Been going through that for a long time. One thing is for sure, the sun will come up and the sun will go down every day. Without human beings, the face of this earth, nothing matters. I spoke to a medical care advocate recently, and that person's job is to make sure that people experiencing a hospital setting is professional and pleasant as possible. That person's goal is that no people come to the hospital unless they absolutely need to. That was their position. What does clean clothes and linen have and mean to that important initiative? Simply stated, spoiled laundry, contaminated with all sorts of germs and bacteria and bodily fluids, food debris, which can be a source of pathogenic bacteria, fungi, and viruses. If someone is sick at home, their clothes can be contaminated too. Regular washing of clothes and bedding is essential, helps remove bacteria, dirt, fleas, mites, and all of those irritants could cause infections. Washing of clothes and bedding can help reduce the incidence of infections, diseases. I want to read to you some of the experience of some of the people that are coming into the Laundromat to take advantage of the free CSA program. I have two kids. I'm currently not working due to unexpected hardships. Programs that help to make life a bit easier, such like this one, Laundromat provides, prices are up with food and everything else, so you never know how simply helping to pay for something as clean clothes is essential. It makes a huge difference. I lost my job, and being able to keep my children and clothes clean means so much to me. Thank you so much. The very nice and respectable and helpful program, I'm so happy that this program exists, and because it helps me as a grandma and a mother. I think you've already improved the community with this program you have. You are doing an excellent job, and the community really appreciates your extra effort such as, in such trying times. Thank you, and keep up the excellent. Thank you, and keep up the excellent attitude with the public needs. The program is very helpful improvement. If you would ask people if they need soaps and dryer sheets, that would be helpful. All my money goes to bills and rent. For me, it gives me hope. Somebody cares. Thank you very much. I do not have a washer and dryer, and I think it, it helps everyone. It helps the neighborhood. This project is beautiful, and thank you so much. Love." Those were actual, uh... surveys that people fill out for themselves. There's so much that the program really needs right now. I know we've been working with the city and everybody else. Thank you for all your encouragement. Everywhere I go, every time I see people in the street or in meetings and events, they say, "Keep up the good work. Don't stop. Appreciate you." I see you at city council in person, YouTube, access channel. Yes, I do believe that people hear me, but please know this. This program is not about me. It is about our community and our people. Please support the Soap to Hope Initiative because it also provides jobs. We have probably twenty jobs that we could give out right now. But we don't have the funding to do that. Me personally, I'm doing a lot of stuff. I'm not gonna complain. I'm very thankful for what I'm, what I've been commissioned to do by somebody higher than me. But we can do so much more for the community, including jobs and other things with support, not only from the city, but from the county and other, other community people. So thank you. Please support the Soap to Hope Initiative. CSA needs your money to support services rendered, employees, employee retention, and...
Thank you, sir. The next person signed up to speak is Brandon Durman.
I have a handout for you. It's just what I'm gonna read.
Jo, yeah, Joanna will come and pass it to you, sir.
Do not touch the microphone, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Brandon Durman, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Coalition for Springfield's Utility Future. CWLP's Notice of Violations and Consent Order with the U.S. EPA for Management of Our Coal Ash Ponds shows that our utility has been alarmingly far out of compliance with environmental laws. City Council must exercise stronger oversight of CWLP to protect citizens from the environmental and financial risks that go with noncompliance. A good integrated resource plan, which we've talked about before, is a valuable source of some of the information needed for successful oversight and accountability. The consent decree, which I hope you've seen, lists hundreds of violations showing mismanagement of the coal ash ponds. The seventy-four percent rate hike in water we just incurred shows what can happen when the council and our utility forego maintenance or compliance to keep current rates low. Details in the decree also suggest that if the coal ash ponds are closed using the cheapest solution, the council will be imposing similarly significant public health, legal, and financial risks on residents and future generations. It's a little technical, I'm gonna give you some points here, though. Here are some examples from the notice of violations. Failure to have enough monitoring wells to be able to find groundwater contamination. Failure to test groundwater for all the possible contaminants commonly associated with that coal ash. Use of a well contaminated with CCR waste, which is coal combustion residuals, as a clean well for monitoring, so contaminated background wells can mask violations. Failure to respond according to the federal regulations when they detected a contaminant that exceeded the standards that are mandated in law. Finally, CWLP found arsenic contamination in almost every sampling event from May 2018 to January 2023. It detected six heavy metal contaminants in February 2020 at levels that require an owner-operator to prepare reports, provide notification, characterize the nature and extent of the release, prepare an assessment of corrective measures, hold a public meeting, and develop a remedy. But our utility did not take those measures. U.S. EPA also found that our utility's 2016 plan for closing the coal ash ponds falls short of legal standards. For instance, the plan failed to adequately identify how the closure will, quote, "control, minimize, or eliminate the post-closure infiltration of liquids into the waste and release of CCR to the ground or surface water." These are technical challenges in this approach that we're trying to take here. It failed, quote, "to provide sufficient information to determine how free liquids will be eliminated." It also failed to determine, I'm sorry, to demonstrate that wastes remaining in the closed ash pond will be stabilized sufficiently to support the final cover system. That's an engineering challenge. The compliance plan required of CWLP under the consent decree to address these failures runs over thirty paragraphs. The consent decree also has four attachments describing up to sixty more requirements necessary to fix the violations. Some of these requirements describe the hurdles that we must clear to lawfully, quote, "cap in place" our coal ash. Those include how CWLP will determine after the final cover is in place that groundwater and other liquids have been removed. How it will demonstrate that the final cover system will not move. What engineering measures it will use to control the groundwater flow into the closed ash pond and releases of contaminated water out of the closed ash pond. CWLP has asserted that capping in place is sufficient and cheaper than removing the coal ash. But it hasn't confronted what could happen if we cap in place but are unable to demonstrate that the capped unit is successful by U.S. EPA's criteria, these stringent criteria I've just mentioned. That would make removal of the coal ash the only solution, and ratepayers would effectively pay to close the units twice. We're sharing these details to make clear the alarming nature of our utility's violations and the very serious financial impact that they could have on our city. This council bears the responsibility of overseeing CWLP like a board of directors. You have the fiduciary responsibility to ensure that our utility provides services in a fiscally and environmentally responsible manner. Citizens need council members to understand the legal and financial risks of CWLP's proposed plans, including the potential costs of compliance or noncompliance. A comprehensive, rigorous, and unbiased IRP can provide cost-benefit analysis of each energy option, including the long-run costs of environmental compliance. And we believe you need that to oversee CWLP responsibly. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Williams?
Yes, um, corporate counsel, I guess, or Doug, if he's here. I, I need a copy of the decree. I don't, who's responsible to give me a copy of that decree?
I can get you one.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The next person signed up to speak is Ann Logue.
I would like to raise a concern that in CWLP's efforts to protect themselves from criticism from the public and the city council, it has at times given a watered-down version, I suspect intentionally sometimes, of what is really happening at CWLP. Transparency and trust is a critical issue since our public utility directly impacts us, both financially and environmentally. At the recent budget hearing, I believe it was last week, when asked about including funding for compliance with the EPA consent decree, Doug Brown said, "We would have been complying if U.S. EPA had just told us six years ago." If the regulations are already in place, a policy of waiting until they are forced to comply with regulations is very troubling. If someone is caught speeding, they certainly wouldn't say, "Why didn't you catch me sooner?" The citizens and the city council need transparency from the leadership at CWLP so we can make decisions on a complete picture, not just a piecemeal portrait. If CWLP makes mistakes, as all organizations do, take responsibility, revise behavior, move forward. Too much is at stake for us to do otherwise.
Thank you, ma'am. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. We are adjourned.